And Eddie, do you have our, the script from last time for the opening remarks?
And Eddie, do you have our, the script from last time for the opening remarks?
Good evening. The planning and commission meeting for September 1st, 2021 is called to order. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, city council, as well as board and commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. Public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Thank you. Glendale TV, VU, VU on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live, hi-def, at City's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. Public comments on specific agenda items will be taken when other agenda items is discussed. Can we get a roll call, please?
I, yes. Commissioner Trachin?
Here.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Shabazian?
Here, on audio.
Chairperson Manassian?
Here. Reports, uh, reports regarding posting of agenda.
That includes one to allow the creation of the one new residential parcel that is less than the thirty thousand square foot average required for new parcels. And to create a parcel with dual frontage along Bullock Road and Melwood Drive. This is the subject site, and I've identified and numbered the parcels. So if you notice the existing house, there's an aerial view straddles. Couple of property lines. And so we have parcel one, no particular order, by the way. Parcel two, three, four. And there's a little triangular piece, which is number five adjacent to Bullock Road. Property currently has access and frontage on Bullock Road. And couple of lots have frontage along Melwood Drive. And again, once you combine and create one single parcel, that is the reason why the exception is being requested because now it creates dual frontage. It is an existing condition, but for a couple of lots. But again, by combining all five into one, you're now creating again this dual frontage. And here is survey. Again, I've identified and red circles the parcels. And you can see the footprint of the existing house. Again, project location. And the parcel numbers and the individual square footages for each, which total twenty-three six six. So the site is zone R one R restricted residential zone. Or ratio district two. The site up again approximately is twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-six four feet. It consists of five existing lots proposed to be consolidated into one single lot. The site is developed with a single family house. The average current slope of the property is forty-nine percent. There are existing oak trees on and within twenty feet, which will remain. There are no oak trees proposed to be removed. Ten oaks are located onsite. Or on adjacent properties, three of them are located offsite on the adjacent parcels and six of the oak trees are protected and four oak trees are under six inches. This information is already included in your staff report as it relates to the requirements by code. And compared to the proposed development. So as required by code, the average is thirty thousand square feet. The project proposes twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-six. Average lot size for properties within five hundred feet is fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-five square feet. And there is no specific requirements for parcel map purposes as it relates to the average current slope. So the project is proposing, actually the part project has an existing average console of forty-nine percent. The lot width, a minimum eighty foot width for lots located at the terminus of the cul-de-sac measured along the street setback line. The property proposes two hundred and ten feet outage along Bullock Road, measured fifteen feet back from the street from property line. And this is the proposed tentative track. With again, the lots consolidated and under the underlying lots or lot lines consolidate into one. Site photos of the project is viewed from Bullock Road. Aerial and Melwood Drive. Project is exempt from sequel review as one existing facilities. Under section fifteen three oh one. Because the project does propose a project that involves negligible or no expansion of the existing residential use be beyond its current existing conditions. In terms of consistency with the general plan. Terms of land use, the proposed parcel map is consistent with the recommended density. They are proposing one single family house that's already there, which is proposed to remain. The new parcel size and configuration is appropriate because it does reconfigure and reduce the five lots into one. The existing residential development again will remain in its present form, condition. So it's in essence, it would ultimately result in best use of the existing land while limiting development to one single family house on the one parcel. No changes again being proposed to the existing conditions or no, no grading is proposed. The existing indigenous trees will be preserved. And existing access will remain and be taken from the existing roadway. Primary access is from Bullock Road and the exception that is being requested, one in a match for the average lot size. So the five existing lots again in total twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-six four feet. And the required average is thirty thousand square feet. The parcel map again will eliminate the irregular shaped parcels that are not individually developed. And will accommodate the existing residential development, which currently again straddles existing lot lines. And so there is no practical way to combine lots so as to yield that average of the thirty thousand square feet. The proposed map is consistent with the land use element because this site will remain very low residential. Very low density with the existing single family to remain. The exception for dual frontage, as I mentioned earlier, currently Bullock Road and Melwood Drive front the existing site. It is an existing condition that will remain, except that the new single lot will have frontage on both streets. I'm continuing, continuing on to access circulation. Bullock Road and Melwood Drive are classified as local streets in our circulation element and are adequate to serve the residential needs of the community. The existing fullback fronting, the parcel will remain and continue to provide access. And there are no changes proposed to the street classification, which is a local street. The project complies with the noise element. For low density, single family homes. The project will not increase the existing ambient noise level. There's no construction being proposed or associated with the proposed parcel map. In terms of the housing, the physical development of the lots is existing and will not change. And so the project complies with residential developments consistent with goal one and two of the housing element. And the list of all the different elements are outlined in the staff report as it relates to safety. The project is not located within a map due to action hazards on landslide prone area. The project is located in recreation planning area three. It will not impact the recreation resources. The recreation resources will continue to serve the existing residential use of the subdivision. And also the site is in an area designated as restricted residential and the area adjacent to the Verduo Mountain. But again, the proposed parcel map is consistent with the open space conservation element. So staff does recommend approval of a parcel map, including the exceptions from the subdivision code. Again, requested with the conditions included in the draft motion on the project's ability to meet the required subdivision map act findings and the project's consistency with the Glendale's Hillside Development Review House. So with that, I will conclude my presentation. End my slideshow momentarily.
I lost it. Okay, everybody's back. For a second. So do we have any questions?
I have one question.
Oh, TV.
I have one question if you can hear me.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I'm having technical difficulties today as well. That's why you can't see me. So very quickly, just wanted to ask, so if in the future, the property owner, and this is a question from our staff. If in the future, the property owner decides to demolish the existing unit that's on the, on the, currently on that lot, which so will they basically be able to create a mega home? I just wanted to understand. I think you went over it that they're not proposing any development, but I just wanted to ask how it would be and how it would look like. Thank you.
So yes, Commissioner, any changes that may be proposed in the future would be evaluated by staff once an application is submitted for review.
Thank you. And currently on that zone, what is the development standards, meaning what percentage of the land are they allowed to develop on?
Well, it would be one single family home and the R one R standards for air ratio district two would apply in this case.
I can, I can help you with that once I, I don't know.
Sure, please go ahead.
Okay, um, my name is Alan Malikam, the project architect. I've been working with staff and Milka and everybody throughout the past several years trying to come up with a project that suffices the need for the client as well as the neighborhood. Originally, what we had was we had two lots subdivided into two lots, two separate homes. But because of the concessions and all the issues and concerns around the neighborhood, we decided that we eliminate the idea of developing two projects and just combine this into a single family home and maintain the existing house. To answer your question, it is a R one R, but because of the slope, it is over forty, forty percent. So it doesn't matter what area that we are in, city of Glendale. Because of being over forty percent, the FAR drops to thirty percent for the first ten thousand. After that, it becomes ten thousand, ten percent. So it's irrelevant of essentially anything over ten thousand, we would be only limited to ten percent. And it doesn't matter which zone we are in, in the hillside, in any district.
Thank you for that answer. Appreciate it.
So just to recap, we are at this moment maintaining the single family home at this moment. And, and we're just basically, we want to combine all the irregular lots that are there into one simple combined parcel. And if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
I have one question. Do all the lots belongs to the current owner or they're separate owners that they're buying?
Correct. They're all, they're all same.
Any other comments? Do we have any phone calls from public?
I do see that there is one phone call. So I'm making the assumption that the public hearing is open. Is the commission ready to hear from the one caller?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon. You're on live with the planning commission. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Tazad Suarez. I'm the homeowner at six one two Secution Lane.
Please go ahead. You're on live with the planning commission. Mr. Suarez, can you hear us? Okay, maybe let's see if Mr. Suarez can call back. He hasn't hung up, but he clearly can't hear us. And so maybe continue with questions and I'll keep you posted if he calls back.
So any other questions from our board members? Let us know when the Mr. Suarez is back. We'll give him like sixty seconds, one minute.
It looks like he's still connected, but couldn't hear. So just sit tight for a second. Okay, it looks like the caller has hung up, but we please ask Mr. Suarez to, if you can hear this, to please call back area code eight one eight nine three seven eight one zero zero. And he's, I think he's ringing. Thank you for your patience. Okay, second time is a charm. Good afternoon, Mr. Suarez.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you, can you hear me this time?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Please go ahead. You're on live with the planning commission.
Very well. Good afternoon, all. Yes, thank you for the opportunity here. So my, my question was with regards to the review, the report that was prepared by the, by the planning staff. And the report states time and time again that the intent is to keep the existing property. And so my question is, given that the intent is to keep the existing property, why is there a need to consolidate the lots in, in a way that would now do not, would not meet the basic criteria that the city imposes for new lots? So if the true intent is to keep the existing residents, why the need for a lot consolidation, other than to pave the way for a future development activity for a very large home? And number two, I was wondering if the, the planning staff could comment to the historical value of the property, the house, which was, I think was in the report, but not shown in the slideshow. And whether that evaluation should not be completed before any decisions are made on actions on this lot. Thank you.
For a call?
I can go ahead and try to explain, but if you, if Milka wants to, you want me to? Milka, we can't hear you.
And also defer to our city attorney staff because I know that this question was brought up before. Regarding if there is a nexus between the parcel map and the existing house. And the answer is there's no nexus between the two. And there is information outlined in the staff report regarding the historic preservation. Regarding the existing house. So Mr. Suarez, I believe is alluding to what is referenced in the report. Other than that, I have nothing else to add regarding historic preservation as it relates to the house. Other than what's outlined in the report.
So Mr. Malita, my apologies because I didn't quite hear you, that you answered to the first part of the question. If you could repeat, please.
Regarding, can you be more specific? What part you did not hear?
Regarding the need to consolidate the lots into a single lot that doesn't meet the basic criteria, the current criteria is declared by the city. When the intent is to keep the existing house as the report states time and time again. And, and why, yes, go ahead, please.
All I mentioned was that there was no nexus between the existing house and the parcel map. Right? Or future development, rather, if that's your question.
I guess my, my basic question is why is there a need to consolidate these lots at this point in time when the intent is to keep the existing house? How does that make it easier for the city or the homeowner in any way?
This is the applicant's request, so I defer to the applicant to respond.
Thank you. Well, as I said, this property goes back many, many years of history with the neighbors. One particular Mr. Suarez, Mr. Suarez and us, we met as we had project in the past, which was development the projects, two properties, lots and creating two lots, which technically it was, it was allowed and we were, we were completely by right, we were proceeding with them. Because of a lot of the concerns, including Mr. Suarez and the adjacent other immediate neighbors, we decided that we were, we will combine the lots into one to eliminate the, the notion or even the condition that people would think that we would be developing two, two buildings on this parcel. And that was basically one of the biggest driving forces in this. Right now, as it sits, as, as you can see, the house itself, it's sitting on two properties. And each one of them, and, and once it sits on that, we are not able to do anything to this house because of the, the teeter tottering of the building over the two parcels. So by, by communicating and discussing and meeting with staff, the best result was to eliminate all these little leftovers of parcels from, once the, in the past, when they had developed these lots, they, this particular property ended up having all these little leftovers. And one is in the, in particular, right at the corner of Bullock, right at the edge of the cul-de-sac, which is about five square feet or some small little area. And then you have other ones that are pretty much landlocked. And so, so by cleaning this up, we create, we are creating a one clean parcel that we have. As I said before, as it sits right now, the two parcels that are, the building is sitting on essentially allows us to build pretty much the size of the building we would be able to build if we combine them all because after ten thousand square feet, it's essentially a ten percent FAR. So we're not really gaining anything in a sense of combining all these lots into one larger lot. So as a, as a planning commissioner, you guys need to understand that when, when we're dealing, if this was a flat lot, I mean, if we were in a district three, by having just simply a ten thousand square foot land, I could have built a forty-five hundred square foot. But in this case, we are in over forty-nine percent, forty percent slope. So it really doesn't matter if I have a ten thousand or a fifteen thousand, because after ten thousand, it's essentially, it's irrelevant for me because of the area that we're gaining. But nevertheless, at this moment, the idea is to clean up the parcels, allows us to have one clean property. In the future, we don't know. We may end up remodeling the house, we may end up doing whatever. But at this moment, there's nothing in the, in the works. The other thing that you have to also remember is that if this property in future, we decide to do any kind of a, let's say an ADU or other things that it, that it's possible to do, or even fixing the driveway that it's not even functional right now. And you can see, you can actually, if you guys visited the property. By combining these lots together, it allows us to fix things, this property that doesn't normally would not be able to do because then I would be entering into one lot through an adjacent lot, meaning that I have to get a variance for that. So by combining that lot, the lots together, it will eliminate any of those issues in the future. Again, at this moment, we're not planning on anything to do. We're not doing anything. We're just trying to clean up what, the mess that it's left over from all the other parcels.
Thank you. May I, may I make a comment, please? Even so. Yeah, so, but in essence, combining the lots, you could conceivably, number one, if the house sits on two lots, why not combine the two lots that the house sits on and, you know, make that a lot to address that concern of house straddling the lots? And then if you were, if, if the city were to move forward with this consolidation into a single lot, doesn't that in essence enable you to build a house of up to close to fifty, fifty-four hundred, fifty-four hundred square feet? And is that consistent with houses in the immediate neighborhood? And with that comes noise, traffic.
Said before, I'm not, I don't think we should have a conversation like this here. But Mrs. Suarez, just to make you understand, in order for me to combine only two of the lots for the existing house to work, I will not be able to enter if I want to fix the driveway. I would be entering from another property. In order for me to do that, I need to get a variance or combine the two lots. And by doing that, I'm left with one leftover parcel. And in order for me to enter into my driveway, I'm going to be entering at the far end parcel, which is number four. And in order for me to do that, I am not going to be able to do that. Only other way would be a variance. And right now, what we're trying to do is we want to fix all these issues so that we have a simple parcel property that it's accessible and we can do and fix all the issues with this.
Okay, Mr. Malikam, thanks for your explanation. I think you explained more than enough. If you can continue, if you have any other phone calls from neighbors or any other questions from?
I have no, I have no other phone calls at this time.
And Commissioners, just, just to again emphasize the point that was alluded to earlier in my presentation, any future proposed development will be evaluated by the design review process, including consideration of any historic evidence at the time of that future proposal.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from board members, commissioners? Can we get a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a first from Tarachian and a second from Fuentes.
Yes.
A roll call. Commissioner Tarachian?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
Commissioner Shabazian?
Yes.
Chairperson Manassian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen, do you need me to read it or are we okay?
If, if the motion was based on the recommended motion in the, attached to the report, I think that's fine. We're fine. It's just if there's any changes.
Well, that concludes our meeting for tonight. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Adjourned. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Bye.
Thank you.